Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to Sedgwick County and the county commission meeting. I'm Pete Meitzner. I'm the vice chair or chair pro tem as it's called. Commissioner Beatty, the chairman Beatty is at a conference this morning doing a welcoming to a bunch of citizens that are in town for a pretty major conference. So he will be joining us shortly. Meanwhile, we will go ahead and you're welcome. The agenda is there at the table if you want to look at the packets. And we are easy to watch on YouTube and Facebook, the county Facebook page. So with that, welcome, everybody, to this meeting. We've got a nice audience here. So we will call the meeting to order Wednesday, April 16th. Madam Clerk.
In vocation to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the proud public which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Next item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Blueball.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Okay, next item, please.
County announcements.
Nicole, good morning.
Good morning, vice chair and commissioners. This is Nicole Gibbs from Strategic Communications. I have Brandon Stitt here. He is the recently deputized Public Information Officer at the Sheriff's Office. He's going to share with you a couple things going on with them, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. Brandon Stitt with the Sheriff's Office. So today, I'm here to just highlight a couple of initiatives that we have going on at the Sheriff's Office. The first I want to highlight is a gun safety campaign. And we did this between Wesley Children's Hospital and the Wichita Police Department. And the reason is, is because within the past three months, we've had some tragedies with guns and young children. And so these are absolutely heartbreaking incidents, and they happened in the city of Wichita. But as you know, grief and tragedy, they don't see any jurisdictional boundaries. And so these tragedies are 100% preventable. And so we are doing our part at the Sheriff's Office and the Wichita Police Department in cooperation with the Wesley Children's Hospital and now the VA. And we are offering free gun locks to anyone that asks. Some of the things that I would like to just highlight that you can easily go and get one of these gun locks from any Wichita Police Department substation. You can also get one in the lobby of the jail. A deputy has one on their person. So if you see a deputy anywhere in any neighborhood, Oklon area, you can flag a deputy down and they can and give you a gun lock. And so that's one of the things that I wanted to highlight mainly with the Sheriff's Offices if these are available. We understand that the gun locks aren't going to prevent all of this, but we have to start somewhere to prevent these tragedies from happening. So I just wanted to also say that there's been several employees here at the Ruffin Building that have asked me for gun locks, so I provided them. Anybody that wants one, just ask. And then we also have, and we are very excited about this, IT has helped us a lot with this, but we are excited to announce the launch of a Citizen Connect Incident Dashboard, and it's a new free tool that helps citizens within the community stay informed about law enforcement activity within the county. We launched this last Monday, and it's an easy-to-use dashboard, and it allows you to explore crime trends, search active cases, and view crash data in real time. This information is coming from our new Tyler RMS system that I believe went live in 2023. We also launched a new CAD system with emergency communications, and all of that data is taken in and put on this dashboard. We also have partnering agencies that participate in this, and that's if they wanted their data shared. And some of those cities within Sedgwick County include Bel Air, Derby, Hayesville, Kechai, Mays, Park City, and Valley Center. East Borough is also sharing their crash data. You can find that dashboard at sedgwickcounty.org/sheriff/citizenconnect, and you can find a direct link there. So my motto for this is stay informed, stay safe, stay connected with Citizen Connect.
That's kind of a mouthful.
Here's some example of the gun locks that we have. They're simple. I did a demonstration with cake. Actually, I did it with all of the news stations, but it's very easy to use. And like I said, we know that these aren't the everything, you know? Safety with guns starts with the home. And so that's, but if we can have these in every home and they're properly used, then we can save a life, and that's what it's all about.
Brandon, we want to have a couple of questions. And how many, do we have those until we run out?
Yes, so that's a good question. I had that on my notes, and I forgot. So Wesley Children's Hospital provided us with 175 to 200. And within the first week or two at the jail lobby, we ran out because we had, we didn't have all 175 there, but we ran out of the supply that we had at the jail. And so the VA stepped in and provided 200 more of them. So we have plenty available between both of these hospitals that are local, and you know, obviously, they're very, they're very happy to provide us with this tool.
Commissioner Blueball.
And Brandon, thank you very much for everything you're doing with the gun safety locks. I've actually shared that on my social media as well. In regards to the dashboard, I'm excited about that. Is there an opportunity for the city of Wichita to get on board? I didn't notice you said the city of Wichita in the, you didn't say the city of Wichita.
No, so the city of Wichita is not a partner within the Tyler RMS system. They have their own niche records management system. The city of Wichita does offer similar crime mapping, but it's through LexisNexis. And so they share their data with LexisNexis. So unfortunately, there are two websites that you would have to go to if you would like to get a clear picture of Sedgwick County, especially within the jurisdiction of the Wichita Police Department. And then you'd have to go to Citizen Connect for the county.
Sounds like our systems just aren't communicate, don't.
Correct. They don't, and I don't know, that's definitely an IT question, if there would be an interface or something that could be built with Niche to go into Citizen Connect. That I have no idea. But yes, that's so unfortunately, right now, we don't have shared.
And I assume we have a link we can share, because I know.
Yes, sorry. And I, dude, I have a Facebook post out, and you can click on that link. It takes you directly to the county's website, which goes to the Citizen Connect page, and there is an embedded link for your computer. If you have an Apple device, there's unfortunately an error that you will receive, but you just click the link and it takes you, you know, right to it.
Okay, I'm sure there's a lot of citizens can be excited about utilizing this, because a lot of people just want to know what's going on in their neighborhood.
Yes, yep. It's a very, it's a very easy tool, and there's even a tutorial PowerPoint that was created so everyone has a clear understanding of how it operates and the different tools that it has, because there's crime trends, mapping, you can do beats, it's a, you can just zoom in to an area, select the agency. It's a really cool, cool tool.
All right, appreciate the transparency. Thanks.
Commissioner Howell. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to ask, so at this time, the taxpayers have not paid for the gun locks as of, as of right now.
That's correct.
Okay. I think people like to know that, and I appreciate the gift of those organizations to provide those. And if I understand correctly, these are, they're only used, these types of gun locks are only used for handguns, is that correct?
So that is a question I've been asked, and also, and I was going to try and find a demonstration of it with a shotgun. And I know that you can use these with a shotgun, but unfortunately, I don't have that video available. But the, the way that the, I would have to mess with a weapon with them to see if I could utilize it with, say, a rifle, a shotgun, and also the handgun is what it's initially or what it was designed.
So in full disclosure, I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Kansas State Rifle Association, so I would like to just share, I guess, another perspective. And again, the gun locks are certainly a great way to provide some safety, but if someone doesn't have a gun lock, there's still some things they can do. And in order to use that gun lock, again, if I understand correctly, typically, the gun would have to be unloaded and the magazine removed, correct?
That's correct.
So again, if someone was a responsible gun owner, and they wanted to leave a gun where a child would have access to that, they could remove the magazine and unload the gun and then remove the magazine one way. One of the problems we've seen in these three incidents, I think, is they left a loaded firearm that only requires one action for that gun to be fired. So the child picks it up, and they pull the trigger, and the gun is ready to be fired. And so leaving a gun in that status with children around is irresponsible. And I think a responsible gun owner, again, I would, I love law-abiding citizens to be educated and know how to use the firearms that they have, and again, show responsibility. And so I think in those cases, I think there have been criminal charges levied in those cases, because as you have a firearm, you're responsible for anything that happens with that firearm. And if you leave that firearm in a place where it could be accessed by a child and someone gets injured, you're going to be held responsible for that. So one thing I would like to say, whether you have a gun lock or not, there are ways of securing that firearm without a gun lock. Again, if you have a gun lock, that's great. You use a gun lock, that's great. It does, it does slow down the law-abiding citizen being able to access that firearm and make it usable, which is one of the concerns I think a lot of people have. And so again, I know there's a financial burden as well, but there, you know, there are quick access gun safes that are designed for handguns. There are, I think even just by practice, if you were going to leave a gun where someone could get to it, you know, you could, you could unload it and remove the magazine and make it so it's, many, many actions would have to be performed to make that gun usable. So at the end of the day, I think education is a part of this, and I would encourage people, if they're going to have a gun, to be extremely educated on how that gun works and make sure they take measures to secure that firearm if it's going to be around children, and again, and again, certainly away from these adults. So responsible gun ownership means that you, if you're going to have one, you take responsibility for that gun. And the gun lock is one way to do this, but there are other ways to do this that I, I think settle on this issue of education and management. Manage your firearm and take care of it, control it, and if you're going to leave it where a child can access it and make it so it could not be fired with one action, especially, I think, leaving it where it could be fired with one action is, is probably the common denominator of these three incidents, where a child picked it up and it was ready to fire. Had you, had they done numerous things, I can, I could go probably a long list of what things they could have done, but there's lots of ways to make it so that it's not a one-action fireable gun, if that makes sense. So it comes down to understanding the responsibilities under the law, being a responsible gun owner, a law-abiding citizen, and taking action to secure that firearm. And again, a gun lock is one way to do that, but even if someone doesn't have a gun lock, there are things they can do right now that would essentially prevent this type of incident from happening.
Yes. Commissioner, you're absolutely right. That's why I specifically wanted to highlight it. This is just an option. There are a multitude of things that you can do as a responsible gun owner to prevent tragedies like this happening, and providing access to a child, even if it's by accident, is irresponsible.
And there are some great places around town, but one that I tend to use a lot is Range 54. They're very friendly. They can explain to people how, you know, how to do these things, secure a firearm or get something to put the gun in. If it's going to be left with a single action, you can quick access that firearm so it can be used for defense, again, where a child would not be able to get in there. There are some great, great options out there today, that some of them cost a little bit of money, some of them, it's just, some of these are just education. So again, there's people that would be very, very glad to help explain ways to protect these children from an accident like this. And again, I would just advocate responsible and responsible and law-abiding citizens and adults having access to firearms and using firearms is, is a constitutional right, and I support them wholeheartedly, but they have to do it responsibly, and they're going to hold them accountable if they fail, right?
That is correct. And we've seen that in these three.
Yeah, and I am so sorry for these children and these families that they're going through. It just truly is tragic, and they should have been prevented, and these things should not have happened. And so I do appreciate the discussion about gun safety, and I do appreciate the offer for gun locks for those that want those. Thank you so much.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, and Brandon, the other quick one is, I'm really glad to hear that you're working with the IT department. I've kind of found that in the county IT department, they are very willing to work with all the departments.
Absolutely.
The technology in the IT world is part of every department, and I think the manager has encouraged them all to look, what, what support can we get that helps? And it's, I just, you're another example of, and I want to thank the IT department if they're paying attention for, for them supporting all the, all the departments.
Well, James is sitting in here somewhere, but we appreciate his, the team of IT and, you know, the help, because I am not a genius when it comes to computers. I can design a graphic. How to get it on the internet is another issue. So I appreciate their help.
Well, if you need some help, I know some of that.
Thank you.
Hearing some laughs here, okay. Anyway, thanks, Brandon.
Thanks again, Brandon, for coming. The Register of Deeds recently launched an upgraded free online property fraud alert service that notifies subscribers by email, text, or phone call whenever a document such as a deed or mortgage is recorded with their name. It offers a quick and easy sign up, alert options for you to choose from, and it also gives you peace of mind with early detection. Just as a heads up, the vendor Fiddler recently sent out an email encouraging those who are part of the previous property fraud alert system to sign up again with their new version. This is a legitimate notification. If you have questions, contact the Register of Deeds. You can also find this information online at the sedgwickcounty.org/registerofdeeds. And then again, just a quick reminder, Sedgwick County has two weeks left under the state of Kansas imposed burn ban. Open burning is prohibited, and Sedgwick County protects our air quality. Only prescribed burns in agricultural settings are allowed. You can find more information at sedgwickcounty.org/fire. And that's all I have for today.
Okay, thanks again, Nicole. Any questions from the commission? Don't see any. Okay, appreciate it, as always. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Public agenda, okay. Nobody, nobody signed up for public agenda, so we'll move on. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of March 26, 2025.
Okay, commissioners, as we've done in the past, if it's okay with you all, I think everybody was present for A and B, which is the meetings of March 26 and April 2. I will, I'd like to move that we combine those to approve the minutes as presented in items A and B.
Second.
Some motion and a second. Any questions, being none? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blueball.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Proclamations. Item C, proclamation declaring week of the young child.
Okay, and Commissioner Wise will read the proclamation. Thank you.
Okay, it's my honor to read this proclamation. Okay, whereas, the week of the young child is an annual celebration of the National Association for the Education of Young Children, the world's largest early childhood education association. The week of the young child's purpose is to focus public attention on the needs of young children, their families, and to recognize the early childhood programs and the professionals that meet the needs of the children who attend those programs. And whereas, the first five years of a child's life are the period of the most rapid brain development and lays the foundation for all future learning. Children needed, need skilled, educated, competent, and consistent early childhood educators to foster their development. And whereas, high-quality early childhood education depends on high-quality early childhood educators who ensure that children with support from their families have the early experiences they need for strong foundation. And whereas, high-quality early childhood programs provide important benefits to children, families, and our community. In 2024, Wichita and Sedgwick County had over 670 programs for children birth to five, serving over 13,000 children. These programs are supported by early childhood professionals who make an impact on the children, the families, and the community. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we, the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 14 through 18, 2025, as Week of the Young Child, and declare that early childhood educators should be valued and respected for the important roles that they play in the lives of children in our community. With that being read, I'd like to make a motion to adopt this proclamation.
Okay, thank you. I'll second that. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blueball.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
And here to accept this proclamation is Janelle Dean and Ann Gaskin, Early Childhood Professionals Organization.
Okay. Good morning, ladies.
Thank you for approving this. I also, I am Janelle Dean, and this is my colleague, Ann Gaskin, and April Schuman. The Early Childhood Professionals Organization and the Early Childhood Directors Organization are local membership organizations that support childcare providers in various roles. These professionals support children and families through their daily work to provide a strong foundation for children. The first five years of a child's life is the most critical time for growth and development, and high-quality childcare supports children during the most important period in their lives and benefits the family and the communities. We are celebrating these individuals who make an impact on children and families in the community with our 10th Annual Impact Award Ceremony on April 19 at the Eugene M. Hughes Metro Complex in the Lowell Auditorium. Please feel free to join us. This year, we have 246 early childhood professionals nominated, serving in various roles in the childcare field, that were nominated by families, they served, that they served to share their impact they're making on the children they serve. Thank you, Sedgwick County Commission, for acknowledging the impact of early childhood professionals in our community and recognizing their hard work and dedication.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If, I think that's the only proclamation we had. If you want to, if we take a five-minute break, we'll have a picture out in the lobby. So we'll be back in five minutes. All right, we've returned and the chairman is here. So Chairman, order and decorum is...
Yes.
Welcome back.
Well, thank you for the grace of speaking at the Greater Wichita Housing Conference going on a century two. It was a packed room. It was wonderful. A lot of real estate people, developers, there were housing folks, nonprofit spokes, everyone in the room talking about the issues of affordable housing and homelessness. So appreciate the grace to let me go speak and give opening remarks there. I'll be back there after this meeting, so. Okay, just finished proclamations. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business, Item D, a resolution declaring it necessary to construct improvements to existing roads in Cedric County, Kansas, under the authority of KSA 68-5103, providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the costs thereof, and providing for publication of this resolution as required by law, 2025 road projects.
Very impressive, Clerk.
Yes, ma'am.
Morning, Lindsay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Povrso, your CFO. This is the first of three similar agenda items. This first one we'll talk about is related to capital improvement projects for two roads. Garth Herman with Gilmore &amp; Bell is here with us today. I'll call him up to the podium shortly to help us walk through the details. The next agenda item will be related to bridges, and then the final agenda item we'll talk about will be related to facilities under state law. Each of these has different requirements that are necessary, and so I'd like Garth just to make sure that you all have some comfort and understanding of why we're taking these actions today. So this first item is related to two road projects that were already approved in your capital improvement plan. They total $1.5 million in terms of bond funding, although your backup materials shows that the total project costs for these two is $3.75 million. The last time we got together and talked about bonds, you had some questions about our debt ratios and the controls, so I did just want to take an opportunity, I will only do it on this item, but I did want to read into the record what those specific measures are and where we sit today, if you'll bear with me. So, under the new policy that the commission passed, what we understand is that we have three measures that we must live under. Budgetary flexibility must be maintained by measuring the available unrestricted fund balance as a percent of budgeted general fund expenditures of at least 20%, but with a target of 30%. So again, that's consistent with your debt management policy requirements as well as your fund balance requirement. It also requires that liquidity would be maintained with total government available cash of at least 120% of total governmental funds debt service, and at least 20% of total governmental fund expenditures. And remember, governmental funds are different grouping. We'll talk about that more when it comes time for your audit versus what you talk about with your financial forecast, which is a smaller subset of funds, which are only those supported with property taxes. And then finally, there are two measures that go in turn, or that we look at in terms of our debt levels. So we want to maintain net direct debt at less than 60% of total governmental funds revenue, and then we want to have total governmental fund debt service at less than 8% of total governmental fund expenditures. In terms of where we measure with that, we are completing the audit now, but based on the most recent completed audit, we had available fund balance at 40%. So that, remember, the target is 30%, so we are doing quite well on that measure. In terms of liquidity, we had total governmental cash at 2,152%. So again, that's a pretty low measure, so we exceed that pretty easily. And then in terms of our debt levels, our net direct debt as a percentage of revenues was 30%, and in terms of expenses was 3.9%, and again, that cap was 8%. So we are well within the ratios, and I will remind the Commissioners that these actually come directly from the S and P rating methodology in order to maintain a AAA status. So everything that is being contemplated today, even though this is just kind of a second step in the process that authorizes us to begin work and then get ourselves reimbursed through bond proceeds later, this all falls well within those ratio measures. And hope when she presents your ACF, your audit report next month, we'll go into the details to show how that has changed in this most recent audit. So with that, I'd like to call Garth up to talk about the resolution itself, and then maybe circle back for questions at that point, if that's okay.
That'd be fine, yes, thank you. Hey, good morning, Garth.
Good morning, Commissioners. Garth Herman with Gilmore &amp; Bell, the county's bond counsel. As always, Lindsay did a great job of, you know, kind of explaining where we're at, and with that background is very helpful. As you mentioned, the first of the three resolutions before you relates to the two road projects, R 348 and R 354. The resolution will authorize those projects at the estimated cost of $3,750,000. Of that amount, $1,500,000 is anticipated to be paid from bonds with the balance of the cost of those two road projects to come from available sales tax funds. After adoption of this resolution, it will be published once a week for two consecutive weeks in the county's official newspaper, and that will start a 90-day protest period. At the end of that protest period, assuming no sufficient protest, the county would have the authority to issue bonds to pay or reimburse the cost of these projects. So with that being said, I'll pause for any questions.
Okay, thanks, Garth, for that. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Howell?
I actually have questions for Lindsay, if that's okay.
No.
And actually, Lynn Packer, if you don't mind coming over as well. And as you started, Garth Brooks, I'm sorry, Garth Herman, you do a great job, and you said Lindsay does a great job, and she does as well. In fact, I'd say Lynn does a great job, so this is not to be critical of anybody involved in this discussion personally in any way. Lindsay, you mentioned that we approved the CIP. I think that was a package CIP of a lot of different projects, not just this specifically, right?
Right.
And I know I did support that. And then in that CIP proposal, the plan for financing was not defined in the CIP approval. It's simply these projects are approved, and how we finance, how we fund those, fund or finance those is a subsequent decision. Am I right about that?
It was included in the, in the financial plan. We do list that each year with how much cash goes into each project, how much bond is supposed to go into each project, and how much others. So that was included, and I apologize that I didn't do a better job of articulating that.
No, no, you did, you did great. Is this similar to what we've done in the past? When, a few years ago, we talked about, you know, our habitual borrowing and paying back money that wasn't necessarily an urgent issue, but it's something we just did kind of in practice. We did a little, typically, we'd borrow around $4 million and pay that back with, over a 20-year period. And this, again, I think I heard Garth say, we're paying this back with sales tax funds. Is that what I heard you say?
Part of it.
Part of it. Where's the other part coming from?
So every year, the Sales Tax Road and Bridge Fund does a transfer of $1.6 million to the county's bond and interest fund to pay for annual debt service. The rest is made up with any property tax that we may need to impose in order to cover that annual debt service.
So it's a combination of like three sources of funding?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so I guess a question for Lynn. It's okay, thank you, Lindsay. Lynn, this Ridge Road section of roadway, it's had this configuration of shoulders for how long? I mean, is it...
Oh, they basically has had no shoulders since its inception.
And how long ago was that?
This is the first time that we're putting shoulders on it.
And how long ago was that?
More than 30 years.
Okay. So what I'm, what I'm getting to is, I don't know why this is urgent enough to borrow money. I think this is one of those projects that we could cash fund because it's, not saying it doesn't need to be done, it does, but I don't know we need to borrow money and pay interest on this one. It's not necessarily urgent, it's been this way for decades. And so I'm concerned about, you know, our, our plan to use borrowed money to address a project that frankly is not something that's like, we would have to close a bridge or something if this didn't, if we didn't expend, if we did not go through this process, the traveling public would have no difference in their, in their travel. But if you closed a bridge, of course, that would be much different than this. And so this, this is, again, an improvement on shoulders, and I know there's other roads that need to have shoulders approved, even in my district. I know that we've talked about that, but I don't know about using borrowed funds to take care of a, a configuration that's been in place for, you know, multiple decades. And the other part of this, reconstruction of a, of a half a mile of roadway for $1.35 million, and just makes me wonder, what exactly are we doing at, at that level of cost for a half a mile? Why is this one so expensive?
So that is being put in at the Mays Industrial Park, so those road standards are a little bit higher. We have industrial standards, thicker asphalt and concrete they're going in at that intersection, at that mile go for the Mays Industrial Park.
Is it, is this road failing currently? Is it...
It is currently a gravel road.
It's a gravel road. So we're going to convert a gravel road to...
So in cooperation with Mays, we're putting in a paved road to help with the, getting the traffic to 53rd Street from the industrial park.
Is anybody else providing some revenue for this project?
This project right here is 100% funded on the half-mile portion of the project in the road. That is 100% funded by Cedric County.
Is there another portion of this road that's funded by someone else?
Not currently, no.
Okay. So you said in cooperation with Mays. I guess they're just receiving this, they're not really, they're not a partner necessarily, they're just...
We've partnered with them on the other side, on 119th Street, with some economic development package, one of which is a left-turn lane, and we have, and I'm not in particular in knowledge of all we've done with that industrial park, because there is an economic development grant involved with that work. This was outside of that.
So there's, you said, commercial traffic running up and down this road. Is there, what type of business and what type of truck or vehicles are we talking about that?
Not only tied to the industrial park, but also in and out of coal, which we do have large semis, 53-foot trailer trucks that are going through that area. Not all the industrial park has been developed yet, but they are attracting, one of the, I know one of the tenants in there right now is Airframe Parts that they're building out there. Another one is Charlotte Pipe, which is conducting, which is doing, in this particular case, they're doing ABS pipe through there, will be trucking it in and out.
We, we were, we were, I can't remember exactly what the details were, but we cheered the Charlotte Pipe choice to come to our community. Was there some commitment at that time we would pave this road?
The Charlotte Pipe is using the 119th portion of it, is involved with that Econ Devo grant. This is on the other side, and to my knowledge, they have not yet developed that portion of it.
Okay. Well, I guess I have some concerns with the, the, what I consider to be surprising high cost for this particular road. And again, I know this is a high-quality road, you just, you just described that, but this is, this is probably one of the most expensive roads I think I've ever seen for a half-mile this Cedric County's ever been involved in. This is extraordinarily high, and I just, I'm concerned about this one. Again, I, I'm not ready to vote for bonding for these two projects yet, so again, I'm trying to be as careful and thoughtful as I can be, and my colleagues can certainly vote for this if they like. But I, I think, you know, fundamentally, if something is not urgent, I would prefer to not have to borrow money. And I think in both of these, both of these projects, I think that, I'm not saying that either one of these is urgent, and second of all, I'm a little bit concerned about the cost of that half-mile. I think there ought to be a way to, I guess, challenge ourselves to get some of the cost out of that. So on this particular resolution, I probably am not going to support this one. I may support one or the, one or two of the next two that we're going to talk about, but on this one, I just don't feel comfortable. So thank you for the answers to the questions, and I sure do appreciate that.
You're good, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Wise.
Lynn, can you stay there? Sorry. Can you talk a little bit about, with this road not being finished and all of the industrial and the trucking that's going through, that's something that I hear a lot about from residents and people in the area, not just on 135th, but if you go over a mile. Can you talk to us and explain why or what benefits this would be to get those trucks off of maybe an overuse of another road, and maybe more prepared for this industrial area? Because I think that's what my constituents have been concerned about. And I understand from a trucking perspective that some of it's the turning in and out from the highway and making that easier on them. Is that accurate or applicable to this road?
Correct. With the half-mile of road we're doing on 135th Street, that includes basically reconstructing the intersection. We're adding turn lanes, wider radiuses that will handle the trucks, as well as paving the gravel portion of that. 53rd and 135th intersection itself is paved, but it is not, it needs to be brought up to handle those turning movements that we are expecting from trucks. In addition to that, it's also setting it, with the industrial park coming in there and it not at its capacity yet, we are expecting at some point, we will need additional traffic control at that intersection. So this project is setting that up to make that future, it's a future reality, much easier and cheaper to construct. The, what we are doing, and that's part of the, that is part of the cost, but yes, the other part of the cost is the fact that we are, it's a beefier road, it's quote-unquote. It's, it's something that we want to make sure that the pavement's going to handle the loading it's going to get, not only just truck traffic, but it's just, it's loaded truck traffic. So that reason, our worst-case scenario is not doing this right up front and having to go back and do continual maintenance on that road, because the only way to fix it is going to be tear it all out from the bottom up again.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Thanks. Couple of questions for you, Lynn and Lindsay. The timing of this, I know this in the CIP on Ridge, my district, we've already, we're in the process of 53rd to 69th now.
Correct.
This is one, can, these are just doing it in two phases, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So 53rd is actually shut down right now, for the most part, on northbound traffic. So the need for this on the shoulders is the excess traffic that's, that's taking place between Valley Center, Mays, and Wichita.
And I will note, 53rd is not shut down right now. The southbound traffic is unimpeded. Northbound has to detour one mile around.
Northbound, that's what I meant, northbound traffic is the detour.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So it is open, other than that, and that should be finished up here by June.
Did we bond fund that 53rd to 69th piece? Was that bond-funded?
I do not believe that portion was bond-funded.
Okay, so Lindsay, a question then on the strategy in the CIP and the planning process for which financial tool we use in our CIP projects. Any insight to that, or...
Sure. Yeah, I'm very happy to speak to that. So as you all, well, the three of you who have been here may recall, what we traditionally have done is, in May, as a part of your budget hearings, Lynn and I tag-team a presentation on what we're considering for capital improvement projects. And as a part of that, what Public Works does is prepare a package based on our estimates from finance of how much sales tax revenue we expect they'll get from the one-half proceeds, as well as what we had historically done, and what I think Commissioner Howell is referencing, we used to aim to do about $4 million per year in bond funding for road and bridge. After we had some conversation about that with Commissioners and understood that that was not necessarily the policy directive that we wanted to follow, we do it more strategically now. So it may average out around to $4 million per year. I would guess it probably is about that amount, but in some years, we'll only do a million or two, in other years, we may do $6 million, depending on the size of the project. So what it is, is basically a prioritization, and when we go through this five-year tool, five-year planning process with the forecast, also with the capital improvement plan, to understand how many dollars are available. As you've heard from Lynn, the last year or so in particular, with inflation, project costs have gone up significantly, and so that has caused them to have to tighten how many projects they're able to do. So as opposed to past years, we may have had some excess sales tax funds that we could save toward a future year, I think they're having a harder time when they're putting together their plans of stretching those dollars. And so that's why we are strategic about how we use those bond proceeds, but we make sure that there is enough funding. There's a lot of work that goes into a multi-page listing of every project that's scaled out over five years with design costs in a certain year, construction costs in another year, figuring out how much funding is available also from KDOT. So there are a lot of different sources and thought that goes into this. We'll present it, this next CIP to you in May, get your feedback. That will then be, whatever your feedback is, along with what we presented in May, will be what we actually package and ask you to vote on in the recommended budget. So that is our typical process. And hopefully, does that answer your question?
It does. Yeah, it does. I just, it's a fair question to ask how we arrive at these conclusions and which mechanism, which funding tools, so.
Okay, that's helpful. Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay. Garth, are we good on Item D? Any other, anything else?
Go ahead.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, I will run Item D. There's three separate items here, but we're going to do this separately. So for Item D, I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bubba.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item E, a resolution declaring it necessary to build or repair existing bridges in the county under the authority of KSA 68-1103, and providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the costs thereof, 2025 bridge projects.
Okay. Hey, Lindsay.
All right, for the record, Lindsay Povrso, your CFO. So this item is substantially similar to the last item you approved regarding roads, but again, there are different requirements under state law for bridges. For this, you will see that there are three total projects that are being proposed to be funded with bond proceeds. The projects themselves total $3.1 million, but you can see in the footnotes on the table in your backup materials, we estimate $2.5 million of that to be reimbursed for, or excuse me, from bond proceeds. So again, I'll ask Garth to come up and explain the parameters for bridges under state law, but again, this would authorize us to begin work and then reimburse ourselves with bond proceeds down the road. So with that, Garth.
Hey, Garth.
Commissioners, Garth Herman. Yeah, as Lindsay mentioned, the reason why we have several resolutions for these three projects is the state law has simply different requirements for each type of project. For bridges, it requires a resolution adopted by the county commission. There's no publication requirement for bridges, and so that's why we tried to, you know, obviously spell out the three projects that Lindsay mentioned, and, you know, included the information there about the amount of those total project costs anticipated to be financed from the bonds with the balance of the costs that are not bonded to be paid from available sales tax funds. So with that being said, I will pause for any questions you may have on this resolution.
Okay. We are talking about Item E, bridges contained there. We're looking at three projects. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Howell?
Yes, just want to clarify, and this might be you or Lindsay, but again, what you just said a second ago, so the $600,000 sales tax, is that revenue we have, or is that something we, we're, I guess, is that current dollars and the $2.5 million is paid for from property tax or from sales tax?
Do you like handling that?
Should I clarify which $600,000 are you referencing?
Well, again, in the, in the three notes there on, on the page there, it talks about...
Oh, the gap, that, yes, the gap would be made up for with sales tax funds, yes.
So again, is that current revenue that we have currently?
It is revenue we are anticipated to receive this year.
Okay, and this is the, the half of the sales taxes for infrastructure?
Correct.
So that's, then the other two and a half million is paid for with what revenue?
Initially, it will essentially be supported with general fund backing, but then we will reimburse ourselves with bond proceeds at the conclusion of the project.
You say bond proceeds, but again, ultimately, taxpayers have to pay for these bonds.
Yes, in the long term, yes.
What, what revenue from the taxpayer is being used to pay back the bond?
That will be from the bond and interest fund, and that will be just whatever the debt levy is that we impose for that over the next 20 years.
Property tax.
Yes, property tax.
Okay. Okay, that, that gets important. So I just have a question for Lynn then as well, but I'm not sure that, is that okay?
Is that okay, Mr. Chairman? You're good.
Lynn, let's talk about these three bridges then. So what's this, can you talk about the sufficiency status of these three bridges?
I do not have that direction, that information directly in front of me today. The bridges were selected based on, we traditionally try, a little background information, we have traditionally tried to use majority of the bond funding we get, the rolling $4 million average on our bridge projects. We also have times when we have some larger road projects that make it difficult to fund under sales tax. As Lindsay alluded, with the cost of construction, materials going up like they have, we just, we've had to rely on that $4 million bonds to get our projects done and ordered, because sales tax just doesn't have enough money in it.
Right, so if I was to describe this to someone who would, who doesn't understand what we're doing here, I would say we have roughly 600 bridges in the county.
Correct.
These three bridges are somewhat, they're kind of more expensive bridges, but the sufficiency rating of these ones are such that they need some type of maintenance repair early, I guess is a higher priority than the other, all the other bridges in the county.
And with us moving, the state, FHWA, Federal Highway Administration, is moving away from sufficiency ratings, so now I can tell you that each of... So now I can tell you that each of these bridges are rated poor. They've gone to a good, fair, poor status. Not fully up to date on exactly what that push is for, but it basically, instead of being 100-point scale, they're going to good, all these classified as poor and they are in need of replacement. You know what the threshold is for poor, number of points? What's the points for poor? I'm sorry? What, how many points does it? There are no points associated with it. It's based on our grading criteria overall of the bridge. So if we don't do this, the consequence would be we'd have to de-rate the bridge for weight and limit, limit the weight or close the bridge? In fact, all of these, if not the two of the three, are already weight limited. Oh, they are, okay. To me, that's, that, that shows a level of urgency that I think I need to hear here. And again, this might, just another question, we've already talked about $4 million on the last project. Is this another chapter, if you will, of $4 million plan to use, essentially doing two years with a four-year, $4 million threshold project proposals, if you will, they just happen to be back-to-back. So this is another one of those, you know, it's a 3.1 million this time, this is the same type of, same type of strategy we've used in the past when we typically used to borrow $4 million. I believe, yeah, actually, your question is yes, but I'll have Lindsey.
So I do want to clarify, while it potentially will even out or average out to $4 million, what you have seen in the CIP for the last four or five years is a varying amount. It really can be as low as a million to a million five per year, up to six or seven million per year, based on how much available debt capacity we have in competition with all of the other projects we're doing. So it is, well, it may even out to that, when we do the financial planning, it is looking at the whole picture of everything that we're talking about bonding. And that $4 million would be for the road and bridge portion only. We don't ever want to exceed that on an average, but it also doesn't guarantee that that's what we're going to do in a year.
So this might be for you or Lynn. If there's leftover proceeds from, this is an estimate, 3.1 million, let's just say they, they spend 2.9, what happens to the other $200,000?
So we are, this is not telling us to go and issue bonds today. What this is doing is saying, we are asking the commission to authorize us to do the work and then reimburse ourselves based on the actual costs at the end. So if you'll remember, there's a kind of a four-step process that we'll go through. We're only on step two here. We won't come back to you until this project is substantially complete. We will know precisely what the costs are at that time, and we will issue bonds only for those costs.
Let me restate my question. So, and this may not be the exact trigger for the actual question, but I just want to have a general, general understanding. When we appropriate funds for a project and the, and the project comes in, final cost below our, our appropriation, I don't know what happens to the appropriated fund to the, to the Department of Public Works. Is that money returned to the county immediately, or is that money held by them and is considered usable for other projects?
So on a project like this, where it's funded with multiple sources, if, if the appropriation, we're not actually giving them cash for this, right? We've only given them budget authority. Now, some part of that is going to be funded with actual cash from the sales tax transfer in. That will happen. If they don't spend that money, then yes, it just stays in that fund because it cannot be used for anything else, and Lynn will use that excess to reprogram for future events. Or, I know in the last month or two, you guys have had multiple CIP amendments that have come through, and they've talked about savings from another project that they'd like to reallocate to that project. That would also be an option. For bond proceeds, because we don't actually go after and get that cash until the very end, there should not be excess bond proceeds that are available. Now, if it happens that we think it's done and we get a refund or something and we do have excess bond proceeds, there's a pretty involved process that we work with, with our bond council, to then find other future cash-funded projects that we can apply those proceeds to. But we try very, very hard to avoid any excess bond proceeds because then we get into trouble because it looks like maybe we're drawing down too much and trying to make a profit because we invest in that. So I hope that answers your question.
I think it does. And just generally speaking, and there's, when there's money appropriated to the department and it sends, and it's not actually ultimately spent on a project that was intended to be spent on. Again, conservative management of these projects is, is great. And having that leftover money, you know, whether it's in our, where, where that money resides is really not my question. But I don't want, I don't want to look at that as like it's money that can be spent on something else we just think of.
We cannot.
So, you know, I, and, and, so I'll stop with that. And I'll just say, back, I guess, a comment back to Lynn, considering the urgency of these, again, I, I think to use bond funding to, to avoid having to close a bridge or to restrict certain traffic over a bridge, I think is, is a more appropriate use for bond funding, so I probably would support this one. But I guess I just would say, you know, the idea of borrowing money before something's worn out or before it's urgent is generally a principle I'd like to avoid. So that's all I'm trying to say. So I probably will support this one. Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner, any other questions? Okay, we're on item E. I will move to approve and adopt the resolution.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Boobal.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meister.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item F, a resolution authorizing and providing for the making of improvements to certain public buildings in Sedgwick County, Kansas, and providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the costs thereof.
Okay, we've gone from roads to bridges, now buildings.
Here we go, the whole gamut. Hello again, commissioners, Lindsey Povoso, your CFO. So this item does relate to facilities. This is something we do much more often than any of the others that we've talked about. Again, this is the second stage in a process. What this does is it takes three projects that have been approved in historical CIPs, including the juvenile services building for corrections. That was also the topic of an update at your retreat and then a following staff meeting conversation. Again, this doesn't commit us to a specific path in terms of remodel or kind of rebuilding, but it does preserve our right to begin that work and then reimburse ourselves with bond proceeds so that we don't get so far down the road that we lose that opportunity to reimburse. It also includes a salt storage building for Public Works East Yard and work at the Sheriff Adult Attention Facility Kitchen. In total, the amount is just over $24 million for these projects. Again, what would happen is you would authorize this today, this would authorize us to begin the work, accept bids and do all of those things, which would then, of course, come back to you through a bid board item for your approval before any expenditure is actually made. And then down the road, we would have a bond sale to reimburse ourselves for actual costs, which we would have a much better idea of after we go through a bid board process. So again, the resolution asks that you essentially give us that authority to start spending money with the intent to reimburse ourselves with bonds. I think I'm okay with not having Garth come up for this one because we have done this recently. If you would like to ask questions, of course, I know he's happy to answer those. Otherwise, I would recommend that you authorize the resolution.
Okay. Looking at three separate projects, equipping and improving facilities. Commissioner, any questions? Commissioner Meister.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey Lynn, I got a quick question on the, on the salt. Sorry, I didn't get with you earlier on the east yard. Is that the one next to Jupera Airport?
No, that is our north yard. This one is located to the, in Southeast District Five.
Okay, that's, I'm very comforted with that since, you know, we've had these discussions about the potential of the Jupera Airport world. So thank you for clarifying that, appreciate it.
Yeah, very good. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, I guess, explain, again, based on your explanation, Lindsey, that, again, if we spent half this much money on that juvenile corrections campus, we would only take on that many, the bonds, whatever, whatever the actual amount would be.
Correct.
So based on that explanation, I was prepared to actually do a, divide the question and try to support two without supporting a third, but under your explanation, I will go ahead and support this today. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Commissioner, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're on item F, so I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Boobal.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meister.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Okay. Lindsey, Garth, thank you, appreciate it Lynn, thank you for all the work on these. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item G, VAC 2024-00060, vacation request in the county to vacate a portion of platted East Edith Drive right-of-way, generally located one block north of East 49th Street South and within one-half mile east of South Woodland Boulevard.
Okay, Scott Waddle, welcome.
Good morning. It's Scott Waddle from the Planning Department. So for this one, this is a little bit unusual because it's not a zoning case, this is a vacation case. And in this situation, the applicant's requesting approval of a vacation essentially to give, give up and to give back County right-of-way, which is generally located south and east of 47th Street South and Woodland Boulevard. So it's essentially south of McConnell Air Force Base is the general area. So in terms of the request, the applicants have indicated they're requesting the vacation in order to have Edith Drive right-of-way's private drive. And an important point here is that you'll notice there are two Edith Drives. So there's one on the north side here, there's one on the south side. The requested vacation area is the one that's outlined in that blue-green area. Now, in the middle is also right-of-way, and that's used as stormwater and kind of some open space, and I'll describe that in just a moment. So the applicant, there's a couple of applicants on this one, and they, they own properties to the south of the subject site, so their property is located about here. So in terms of the property, the subject site is Edith Drive, which was shown on the Holmes Valley View Estates Edition, and that plat was recorded back in 1957. Edith Drive, this one to the south here, is 50 feet wide and is generally unimproved, and you can see that in the aerial here. The western portion of it is in use as a driveway and is drivable. The remaining portion has tall grasses and some trees and is not actively maintained by either Cedric County or Gypsum Township. So that starts, the driveway stops right about here, and you can see kind of the grass and there's some trees back in here. The subject site is approximately 1.2 acres in size and is not zoned. In terms of utilities, there are no public utilities in the subject site. In terms of franchise utilities, AverGee does not object to the vacation. AverGee does have overhead power lines that cross the subject site going north and south, and easement will need to be dedicated in the subject site to protect those lines. Likewise, Cox does not object to the vacation. They do have lines on the AverGee poles in the same location, obviously, and so the same easement would satisfy their needs. In terms of the roadway network, Cedric County Public Works does not object to the vacation, provided that an access easement is recorded for private access to the lots, and that's essentially so that these lots would have access. This would ensure that no property would be deprived of access to the public roadway network. Cedric County Fire does not object to the vacation, provided that the private service drive can only serve a maximum of three properties, which would be the situation here, and the applicants have made sure. In order to ensure that, access control for certain properties on the south must be dedicated to ensure that only, only three properties are served by this private drive. So that access control essentially says, these certain properties will not have access to this private driveway. They'll get their access in different ways. Now, discussions, one of the questions that came up in Agenda Review was about addressing. And so discussions with GIS, Fire and MABCD show that addressing would be done from Mission, which is located directly to the west here. So because if this turns into a driveway, obviously they can't be addressed off of Edith, so they would transition to Mission. In terms of context, so the property directly north of the subject site, which is outlined here, is Cedric County right-of-way and is used for stormwater and as open space, informally as open space, and that's this area right up in here. Properties to the south of the subject site are zoned SF20, and one is developed with a house and related outbuildings, and so that's this property right here. And that is one of the applicant's properties. Directly to the east of the subject site is right-of-way for Holm Street. So going over here, this is, shows Holm Street, which is unimproved, so it's not been constructed, it's not built, not used on a regular basis. Directly to the west of the subject site, so to the west here, is Cedric County right-of-way, developed and in use as Mission Road and maintained by Gypsum Township. So that's this street right here. So in terms of review, what's happened is that on January 16th, the MAPC subdivision and utility advisory committee voted four to zero to recommend approval of the vacation request, subject to the conditions which are identified in the staff report. Two members of the public spoke at that, at that meeting. Both individuals reside along the north portion of Edith Drive, which is up to the north up here. They raised concerns regarding continued access to the center area between the north and south portions of Edith Drive. They were concerned that the neighbors in the area walk around that center portion and use Edith Drive to do that walk. If the vacation was approved, a fence could be erected across the former right-of-way, the one that's being discussed, the subject site down here, and it could prohibit neighbors from walking completely around the center area. So on January 23rd, that was on the 16th, on January 23rd, the full MAPC voted 10 to zero to recommend approval of the vacation request, subject to the same conditions recommended by the subdivision committee. Again, those are listed in the staff report. No one spoke in opposition to this request at the MAPC's public hearing. No written valid objections have been filed, and that's an important process with vacations because we send out notification to all the adjoining properties, and if any objections come in, it invalidates, if any of their objections come in, it invalidates the vacation. So approval of the request can be done by a simple majority vote or three of five commissioners. Also, it's important to note that all of the MAPC recommended conditions have been met by the applicants. This allows the application to proceed to the Board of County Commissioners for final action. So you'll see in the packet, there's a bunch of easements and other documents that are included. Those satisfy the requirements that the MAPC recommended. So in terms of recommended action, it's recommended that the county commissioners follow the recommendation of the planning commission, approve the vacation, authorize the necessary signatures, and the vote requirement for that is just three of five votes. Then alternatives include the following. You can deny the application by finding that the property is necessary and desirable for public service and therefore granting the request would result in the public suffering loss or inconvenience, and that would require three of five, five votes, so simple majority. Or you have the alternative of a partial or amended approval. You can approve a partial or modified vacation. This would require four findings. One is notice, the notice has been given as required. Two, that no written objections have been submitted by adjoining property owners. Three, that the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience. And four, that no property, private rights will be injured or endangered. And again, just requires three out of five votes on that one. So with that, I'll take you through some of the graphics here. So here's the subject site. Here's just an illustration so you can see where the property lines are. Here's the original plat, so it shows the two Edith Drives. These are the properties that were notified of the vacation. And again, this is an exhibit that was submitted by the applicant. It shows the width of Edith Drive and its relationship to other properties. And so with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, Scott, thanks for the presentation. Before we move on with questions and comments from the commission, I want to give everybody an opportunity to, to let us know if they've had any ex parte communication. So Commissioner Boobal?
I have not.
I have not had any ex parte communication.
On the same, have had no ex parte communication, remain open-minded on the facts of the case?
I have not had any communication at all.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a phone call with one of the residents on the north Edith, Edith Drive. I don't remember her name, I hate to say that, but she has a residence on one of those homes, I think towards the east end of that drive, and it was a, a very detailed discussion. But again, I am, I'm not biased in her, in her direction. I'm, I'm listening to the evidence today and I'll make my decision based on what's been presented. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Before we move forward, do we have any questions for Scott or staff at this point in time? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. Just, just to be clear, so I'm looking at the plat here, and thank you for your presentation, Scott, you did a great job.
Thanks.
Looking at the plat here, the, the lines of Edith, the southern Edith, Edith Drive are very defined on the plat.[1754.83]
How wide is that?
50 feet, sir.
Okay, and how wide typically would a driveway need to be to access the homes that are going down that lane?
Oh, gosh, I don't know a typical width, but I know for streets, a single lane could be as small as nine feet, 10 feet. So if you wanted a driveway that could afford two cars, two vehicles at once?
Our service drive code that has a requirement, though, that requires fire trucks have to be able to pass each other at some point, so I guess the full width required for fire trucks to pass each other would be, I see something coming down, right?
A Lynn to the rescue.
I have a number in my head, I'll see if I'm right.
Good morning again, Commissioners. For the record, Lynn Packer, Director of Public Works. The service drive code calls for a 20-foot width minimum.
Okay, 20 feet. And back to Scott for just a moment, and you said that the proposal today does allow for the utilities to stay in place, and they have a right to exist on this property, even if we vacate this, they, utilities are going to be able to stay in their location, essentially have the easement they need to, to keep these utilities in place.
That's correct. So currently, they cross north to south across this, they don't travel along it, so it would preserve that ability for them to remain there.
Okay. I may ask some other questions, but Mr. Chairman, I'd encourage you to open a public hearing in this here for people if they're here.
Okay, thanks, appreciate that, appreciate the suggestion. I think we should do that. Why don't we open up a public hearing at this point in time and see if there's anyone from the public that would like to entertain comment? I do, would also encourage if the applicant or applicant agent is here, we'd also encourage them at this point in time to be able to share. Okay. If you can just give us your name and address, our county clerk, give you five minutes?
Yeah, Kirk Miller, K.E. Miller Engineering, I'm the agent, 117 East Lewis. The applicants are also here, two of the applicants, the ones actually want to build on lots nine and eight. The reason for this is, I mean, as you have seen earlier in the presentations earlier, the cost of building to a county standard is not cheap, and it'd be cheaper to do a driveway standard, which still has to meet fire code, but it doesn't go through the county and meet the normal road standard. And what this would do is also put the burden of the maintenance on these property owners rather than on the township, so it could actually save the county some money if it went this route. I'd be glad to answer any questions, and the applicants are here, if you want to ask them any questions.
Okay, appreciate that. Your first name again?
I'm Sir.
Kirk, that's it, yes. Okay. Any questions for the applicant or applicant agent? Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'm not sure if the applicants are going to speak or not, but if not, I have a question for at least you or one of the other ones if they speak, so don't go too far. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Why don't we continue through public comment? Would anybody else like to address the commission on this item? Okay. Does it look like we have anyone else? Commissioner Howe, would you like to ask your question to the applicant agent now?
Yeah, I would like to do that, thank you so much. So thank you for being here this morning, sir, I sure appreciate it. And I want to say congratulations for being able to plan to build a house. That's going to be a lot of fun to do that, a lot of work, but it's going to be wonderful, I'm sure. And I, and I would just say, I am very sympathetic to the argument that the county standard is, is very expensive and a driveway standard is less expensive. I think you're absolutely right about that, and I think that is duly noted, that that is a rationale for this. I'm generally in favor of the idea that's been proposed here, but I would ask, in light of the fact that this is a 50-feet-wide lane, I'm wondering if it's possible for us to partially vacate this. What I mean by that is, the, the southern, say, 30 feet or southern half, southern 25 feet, let's just say, to construct the private driveway. The lake, construct a fence on that one. Where's private property? That would be reasonable to construct a fence, because the understanding today, walking north, and they have to cross that imaginary line in the middle of that, what used to be Edith Drive. I wouldn't want, I would not want them to be charged with trespass or anything like that because it's not clearly marked, and so if it is clearly marked, I would expect these folks to stay on that northern half, that half of the vacated, excuse me, the northern half, the part that would not be vacated, as a way to meet the desire of both parties. So i- if that would satisfy the folks on, that have objections to this, and it would provide the, the necessary access that the people to build this house would need, to me, that would be a really good way to compromise on this. I just have to know your thoughts on that.
Okay. I'll, I'll let the owner speak.
Okay.
And I can throw something maybe after that.
So, excuse me, David Counts, 1748 Waterville Court in Derby. So I'm the owner of Lot 8. I just want to say that this is a process of at least eight months in the making. I purchased the lot back in August, or maybe even before, sorry. We've been ready to build ever since then, and we're just trying to get through the, the red tape of getting a road put in there. Like I said, this was all plotted out back in the late 50s. The previous owner of Lot 10, she bought all 10 lots, and the developer never came back to finish all the roads. So I've been sitting on my property that I paid good money for and not able to access it, and the reason for going with a private drive, like we discussed, is it's a lot cheaper to go private drive. Myself, the current homeowner out there, and Brian, will share the cost of maintaining that road and not having to split, you know, say, $100,000 across all five of those lots, be it in specials or whatever, so we're going to take on that burden. We're not trying to restrict access to anything, and I believe the reason for the 50-feet vacation is, like you said, the, the road width is required to be 20 feet for the water trucks to be able to pass along that road. We don't plan on making a 50-foot-wide drive, but it's easier for the, the dump trucks to go in there and have a plus or minus buffer to not have to be up to 20, 25 feet. So there's no, no intentions of putting a fence on the, the northern side. If any fences were to be constructed, it would be on the, the south side on our actual property lines. The, the private drive is just that in name. We're not trying to restrict anyone's access.
And I apologize, I missed your name again.
David Counts. We had spoken on the phone after you talked to the owner on the north side.
Very good. And, and again, I, I support your right to access property that you own and to certainly develop that, and, and I don't want to be, you know, requiring things that are in excess of, you know, it's going to cost you enormous amounts of money, that's going to make this very difficult. So I want, I want, I want you to be successful. To my, to my concern, or to my idea of essentially vacating half the space, like 25 feet to the south on that entire length of drive, is this something you'd be okay with? Just to make it clear that public has a right, he will to walk on the northern 25 feet, and you would have the right to do whatever you want on the southern 25 feet. And again, if it's not delineated clearly, that if someone was to cross the imaginary line, that you wouldn't go after them with a, some kind of a charge of trespass or whatever, but you'd have the right, if you wanted to delineate that line and make it, if you will, you know, no public access, if you want, you would have the right to do that. So if I split this right down the middle and say 25 feet for the public and 25 feet for your needs, would that be a way for this to happen, and you can, you would have the right to do everything you want to do? Would that be a reasonable solution in your opinion?
In my opinion, I think it's just going to extend the process. Like I said, this has been at least eight months in the making. Like I said, the, the road is just private drive in name only. There's no private drive sign going at the end of the road. We're not trying to restrict anyone's access, and if we did go down to 25 feet, like I said, it would be harder for the construction company dump trucks to go in there and stay within that. You're not giving them much of a buffer to, to lay gravel down.
And you mean, you mean that they would have trouble getting down a 25-foot-wide driveway?
Just actually putting down the 25-foot driveway. We have a, so if you look at the, the diagram there, so they, they'll have a buffer along that to be able to make the, the road 20 feet wide as required by the, the fire code.
Okay, I guess I'm, I'm having trouble understanding the difficulty for the, I don't, and I don't, and to be clear, I don't want to add a bunch of time to this either. I understand you're, you're wanting to get this behind you, and I, and I understand that this is very reasonable, but I'm, I'm not sure I understand the issue with the dump trucks. Again, if they, if they laid some gravel on a portion of the public accessible land, it would not necessarily be in any way against the law to do so. It's just that something, it's, no one's expecting you to, to improve, if you will, the public side of, of, you know, the, the part that would be considered public accessible land, no one's asking you to do anything with that land. You can completely ignore that, and you only need to worry about this, it's on, on the, on your half of the, on your half of this. And so, again, if the truck needs a little more space to get down there, or you end up putting some gravel slightly across that line, I don't think there's a problem with that. I'm trying to find balance here.
Now, my road is on county property, or public right of way.
But we vacate this, this becomes your property.
Right.
Right, so what I'm asking is, we just gave you half of the road, and you have access then to put in your driveway on what is currently called Edith, Edith Drive, and we gave you 25 feet of that end-to-end, how that doesn't provide you everything you need to do what you want to do?
It does, and just timing of consideration here, like it was mentioned, there was no written complaints from anyone. There was a member that called you and had an issue, nothing written. So to me, no one else in the neighborhood has had an issue with the 50 feet. I feel as if all the paperwork's been done to that standard, no written objections, no formal objections. I would just like to proceed that way.
And again, I, I wasn't, I'm not aware of the details about the, the two people spoke at the utility subcommittee. I don't know what they said there, but I assume that they were the opponents, or was it you folk, was it you two?
I spoke, and then there was another couple there, and we resolved all the issues.
Were they an opponent to the idea, and you guys worked it out?
They were unfamiliar with what was going on. They just saw the sign out there, showed up to the, the meeting, and we discussed that we're not trying to restrict anyone's access.
Are you aware, again, they, they, it sounds like they, again, I have, I have to clarify this with staff, but the folks on the north side there that were provided public notification, they did not exercise their option to, to be heard? Is that what we're saying? The folks on, on the other Edith Drive were notified, but they did not exercise?
Correct.
So are you aware of their, of their concern? And again, if we vacated the full 50 feet and someone walked on that side on your private property, are you going to be okay with that?
Yeah, we're not trying to restrict anyone's access.
But you could.
We could.
That gives us private property at that point. And that's their concern, is we don't, they don't know what you plan to do to limit their ability to walk around that water, that body of water there. And again, I'm not, I'm not going to validate the stories, but one of the arguments that they made is, you know, they've spent a lot of time and effort to take care of this piece of property, and they, they enjoy it like it's a park. It's not really a park, but to them, it's a, it's a, it's a thing that they enjoy in their neighborhood, and they've had access all these years, and they've intentionally taken care of this through community effort. And so they're upset because if we vacate the full 50 feet, there's a point there on the, on the north end of that where that driveway as drawn there gets, it gets basically razor-thin to the body of water, which means you really can't walk around that without walking onto your property. And that's, that's the one pinch point there that causes them to really not be able to access the full access around the entire body of water. That's, the pinch point there, that curve on the, on the north end of that is razor-thin close to the edge of the body of water. And if there's anything, you know, anything laying, you know, on the edge of the body of water, they would have to walk up on your property, and they're very concerned about that because they, they view this as basically a barrier to walking around that full, that full space. They only walk partially around it, and that's, that's their concern. So I'm just trying to find a balance. And again, if, if 25 feet's not the right number, then maybe, you know, maybe it should be 30 feet or whatever. But again, if we vacate the entire 50 feet, then they, they, at least the, the discussion that I had, it sounds like they believe there's a higher risk, they would not be able to do what they're currently doing. So from their perspective, this is a, a, an amenity that they enjoy, this is going to be taken from them because we're vacating the full space, and then it limits their ability to walk around it as they currently do. That's their concern, so I shouldn't speak for them, but...
There was one member that you talked to that had a, an issue with it. They chose not to, like I said, do any type of formal written complaint. I think this is just a historical issue with the, the previous homeowner in Lot 10 that she's having issues with. We're not trying to restrict her. I really just want, like I said, we're ready to build. I just need to get the road in. Electric's out there, as soon as I get approval for the road, I'm getting water put out there. We're past due on wanting to get the house out there.
Okay, and so you, okay.
If she cared enough, I feel as if she would have written a formal complaint, and I talked to you, and you said that she was very rude on the phone with you. So I'm here, trying to make my case, as well as my neighbor. Everything's been approved up to this point. I don't see any reason to, to not move forward.
And I, and I think that the, the cards are in your hands, sir. I, I would just say, if this doesn't add any length to the project time for you to do what you need to do, in that situation, are you still opposed to, to giving up any portion of this 50 feet?
It will add length to the time because up to this point, I've had to get signatures notarized from all 1, 10, 9, 8, and 7. And so it takes a lot of work to get everybody together to get all these signatures. I feel as if everything's been approved up to this point, I don't see why we're getting stuck on this one, one point here.
And I, and I'm not sure exactly what you asked, asked those folks. If you asked them if you have any problem converting this to a private driver, did you, did you even, you know, present to them any other options, like, you know, we would still, you know, provide public access to a portion of that? I mean, I don't, I don't know what your conversation was, or what the understanding was of the people who signed, but again, I, I know you've gone through a lot of work, and I want you to be successful, so I hope you're hearing me. And I, I think you have all the cards in your hand. I'm just trying to say, you know, 50 feet is, is, sounds like it's more than you need. And my question is, can we split that in a way that provides, if you will, meets the, the desires and needs of both parties? And that's all I'm asking. And I don't know, again, that's, maybe it's not something someone's asked you before. I talked to staff about this a while back, and I really wanted them to, I guess, you know, discuss this however, because to me, there's an option that's not been presented to all of the parties. And so to me, if, and I hate to slow you down, but I guess one of the options I'd say, since this hasn't been discussed, by MAPC, this wasn't something they talked about, it sounds to me like the parties were unaware of it, it sounds like, then I'd be more inclined to send this back, which would slow this down. I would, I'd hate to do that. I can make amendment to this right now, and I think you can move forward. Or we can send it back and have this question done in a formal hearing. I, I don't know what to do here, but I want you to be successful, I want you to enjoy, enjoy your property, I don't want to slow you down in any way. But 50 feet is, in my opinion, it is completely beneficial to you, it's 1.2 acres, we're going to give it to you, and the other people feel like we're taking property from them. So that's my concern. We have two property owners that both have rights, and in government, we do our best to try to, to balance those rights between different people. And the, and the question is, is there, there is a, there is an option that, that I think provides that balance, and as it's been presented to us today, there's one person in this, in this situation, is, has a, in their opinion, they're having something taken from them, and the other party's having something given to them. So that, to me, is, is a proposal that seems to me, there should have been more work done on this one. And I, having said that, I'll just stop talking for a bit and see if anybody else has any questions, or, and I may have a question for staff to clarify a couple of things I already said. Thank you, David, for your time.
Okay. Other questions from the commission? Commissioner Muntz here.
Yeah, this would be, this would be for Scott, thank you. Just a, kind of a process question. On your, one of your previous slides, there's a, what's that, there's a line that's going across, what, what is that line? There, that white line? What, what is that?
Oh, this, up to the north, up here?
Right.
Yeah, that's a waterway, so it just shows where the water drains, essentially where the water channelizes.
Oh, okay. So that, when it was platted, everything's cool on the, on the stormwater runoff and all that stuff?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay. That was one question. And then the other one, again, a procedural question. So when we vacate, that's almost embarrassing to ask, but when we vacate land, do, is there any compensation to the township or the county for that? Or we just vacate?
And I think that's because of the history of how the property is acquired in the first place. So in this situation, there was a plat, as part of the plat, the property owner at that time dedicated the roads and whatnot to the, to the county. The county accepted that dedication, and so in theory, a vacation, when it comes up, is giving back the property that was dedicated at one point to, back to the property owners. And in this case, you know, obviously, the person who platted it originally owned all of the land. Over time, the land has been sold, so then it goes to the adjoining property owners. In this case, there's only adjoining property owners to the south, not to the north, otherwise you would see it typically be split in the middle.
All right, so, yeah, that helps. So when it, when it's, property owner, they dedicate a right of way to us to potentially build, plus utilities and all that?
And I do...
And then they're asking for...
And I do, and we have not received an objection from them.
Okay, okay. And then, okay. And then the property owner that was just up here? I just wanted to, thank you for the conversation you're having with Commissioner Howe, and I just want to say that I, I respect what you're trying to do. I just want to say that I respect what you're trying to do, and the neighborliness of you, and I don't know the exact foot that's needed, but I, I do respect that you need, that your request is to, is to have the vacated property versus trying to split the hairs one way or another, but I don't have any other questions for you, I just thank you for comments.
Just one comment, procedurally, we're still in the public comment, haven't closed public comment yet, so if there's other comments for the applicant, applicant agents, I think, I don't want to cut off anybody, any engagement, so Commissioner Howell?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and David, thank you, I'd like to ask if the other applicant or the agent has similar answers to yours, David, or do they have, are they in total agreement, or is there a difference of opinion between the three of you? Are you willing to say anything, sir?
I can say something, Brian Ellerman, 4255 Auburn, I actually have the plot next to David's, part of the reason for the vacation, that's my understanding from this situation, is because it's a private drive servicing multiple houses, at certain points, we have to have the road wider in order for fire and rescue to be able to get their vehicles headed out, and so that's part of the reason for the width of the plot, based on what I've been told.
But you did hear earlier when I asked staff that question, they said that our service drive code for a fire truck access to pass, is 20 feet, and this is a 50 feet, this is a 50-foot wide piece of property, so that's really my question, it's actually more than you need, so...
Well, and, you know, our main thing is, is getting the project moved forward, okay, we have no intention of restricting anybody's access to that area, quite frankly, the area that's directly across from my property hasn't been that well maintained, and I'm going to have to get a logging service in to remove several dead trees on that, because it's a very hazardous area at this point, and I want to get all of the rot out, because it's just dumping into that waterway and making it worse.
Okay, and then I guess I would ask the, I have a follow-up question in just a moment, but I have a, I'd like to hear from the agent again, and see if he agrees with both of you that this is, you're standing by your desire for the all 50 feet, go ahead.
Okay, the 25 feet would not be enough for what they, I mean, I'm looking at county road we're designing right now, and they're making us go 28 feet wide, so, I mean, I understand the 20-foot requirement for fire, but 25 is not wide enough, I mean, if, if we were like 40, 45 feet, somewhere in there, that would probably be more reasonable, what that will require though is, then we will have to redo some of the documents, get them re-signed, that type of thing, because they're based on a 50-foot easement and 50-foot.
I haven't asked staff that question yet, but I will in just a few minutes, but, and again, they clarified for a driveway, it's 20 feet, you've mentioned a county road being 28 feet, but that's a different standard, a driveway needs to be 20 feet, and I don't know why we keep talking about something more than 20, what we need is 20, that's not...
But then you may have ditches on the side and everything else that they also have to maintain, so I don't think 25 is a good number, honestly, I mean, I don't, it's not my property, so I'm just the agent, but I don't think 25 is a good number, and, you know, if you were to put in a sidewalk or something, your sidewalk can only be about five feet wide, so...
Okay, let me ask another, a different question then, if I have a condition that the public has right to walk around that waterway, even if they come onto your property to do so, is that something we can write, can we write that condition into this, that that's in black and white, written in the conditions, can we, can we add a condition that the public has the right to walk around this waterway, even if they trespass onto your property, they have a right to do that, are you okay with that?
It doesn't sound to me like they have an issue with it, that's...
If they're on the north side of the road, I don't care.
You have to speak to the microphone, sir.
Oh, sorry, if they're on the north side of the driveway, or walking along the driveway, I'm not worried, it's not an issue.
And I don't know if we can, you know, again, trying to delineate where they can go is part of the challenge here, so if they get up where they've got to cross onto your property, I don't know how far onto...
But what you're proposing is, is that we also vacate the rights to our property on the south, and anybody can trespass in and around our houses.
Yeah, I really don't, I don't...
Without a delineation like that, we would be opening ourselves up for anybody and everybody to trespass.
Commissioner Howell, would you mind if we get a legal opinion on, Justin, would you mind weighing in on, this is a little different than what we've done before, so...
Certainly Chairman Justin Wagoner, County Counselor, if I'm understanding what Commissioner Howell is asking there correctly, that I think one of the concerns I would have is that, I think what Commissioner Howell would be asking is that they would consider this not to be a vacation, essentially vacates the public's access, so it'd be almost a limited exception of sorts, which is just, I mean, not something we do in vacation orders, to the extent we're granting certain parties an opportunity, because again, you're vacating the public's access and ability to utilize something, so I don't think it would be proper to put that in the board's vacation order, but I'd be happy to answer any questions on that, if there would be any, thanks.
Let me see if I can ask the question to Justin.
Please, please.
So again, if people who live, I don't know how you define this, but they live in the, they live in the area, and they stay within 50 feet of the waterway, even on the south side of the waterway, they stay within 50 feet of the water line, the existing water line, could that be, again, is that clear enough to say, because we, we're essentially given this 50 feet to these folks, but the people who live there could have, as long as they stay within 50 feet of the water line, of the...
I think I understand what you're asking, Commissioner Howell, I mean, I don't have, I can't tell what 50 feet from that is, and how that fits into the proposed area to be vacated, obviously, we would need legal descriptions to reflect that, I think, in order for staff to look at this, I'd look to, and if planning staff has any thoughts on that, but I don't know that that, I think what you've asked about, Commissioner Howell, you could do, I think it is permissible to not do the full vacation, but I think it would have to be a limitation on the size of the vacation, from the 50 feet down to something else that could be reduced to a legal description, but I do, if we go 50 feet from that water line, I don't know where that gets on the map, I'd like to Scott if he has any additional thoughts or comments on that.
Yeah, there's a couple of options, so one is modifying the vacation to explicitly retain the ability for pedestrian and public access on there, another way to do it would be to do a full vacation and then place an easement on that same property, to specifically identify that this is permissible for public pedestrian access on there, then the third option is to not vacate the entirety of the 50 feet, but to do a portion of that, so I think those are the three options that will get you public access.
Are there any, any one of those three options we could do today, in terms of adding a condition to this resolution today, that would get us in that direction?
Let me check real, let me discuss real quick. Okay, so in discussion with the applicant, the agent, it sounds like the timelines for the options are about the same, because they all would require signatures by the same parties, so it's just a matter of which document you're taking around to get the signatures.
So who gathers the signatures?
That would be the responsibility of the applicant.
Okay, how many, how many, so we're talking to people who have properties on the south of the subject vacation property, and two of them are standing here today, how many other folks do they need to get signatures from?
So, on the corner lot, there's two owners on the deed, on the next one to the right, two signatures, two, two, and one, so, I didn't do my math, but was it two, four, six, eight, nine, nine signatures, and they all have to be at the same place at the same time with a notary, and everybody's busy, you've got certain hours, and again, I feel like we're holding this up for one, one individual who wasn't able to or willing to do an actual formal complaint against this process, it's gone through the entire process up to this point, and we're, we're holding out for, for what?
And getting those signatures would take how long? You prepare, Scott would prepare the paperwork, and you provide that to the applicant to get the signatures, when can that be done, if we went down that path, how long until that paperwork would be provided to the applicant to get the signatures?
Okay, it's actually faster because we're not involved in that process, we leave that up to the applicants to prepare that and bring that forward, so they would change the numbers, produce the documents, get the signatures.
Okay.
I'm sorry, last time we went through this process, it took two weeks to coordinate everybody.
Because the homeowner, the house out there right now, he works out of town, so finding him in town at the same time is the notary and everything.
Is there a way to send a document to, again?
He and his wife have to sign at the same time in front of the notary.
I understand that, you could, I'm not a legal expert here, but can you provide, if you will, signatory documents for those that can't be co-located, to get their signature notarized, that would support this change, and they can send that to wherever, he can get a notarized, send that one document back, that would support the change, they don't actually have to be co-located, and they don't have to be signed at the same time, as long as each signature is notarized, and so, again, they could be different documents that are sent to different people, that eventually come together, if you will, to provide the necessary agreement, so, I'm not an attorney, but it seems to me that this is a logistics concern that's easily solvable, so I'm not so sure that if you send a document to him, he wouldn't just sign that in front of a notary and send it right back, so I don't know why that's not possible, even if he's not here, he could sign it wherever he is.
Please, Commissioner Muntz, Justin Wagoner, County Counselor, at this point, I was going to ask Samantha Seang if she could come and address what's in front of you, we're talking about stuff now that's kind of getting convenience and all these other things, I thought it might be helpful for the board to hear Samantha describe state law on these vacations and the considerations for you all, I realize we don't usually have these on new business, I thought that might be helpful.
Okay, Samantha?
Samantha Seang, Assistant County Counselor, case 58-26 sets out what the criterias that the board should be considering, and those two criterias are whether, one, the property rights of the public, if there's an inconvenience or loss of enjoyment and use for the public, and then the second criteria would be whether any private rights have been endangered or injured in any way, all this discussion regarding the timing and how long it would take to get the new legal descriptions or new signatures and stuff is outside the scope of what the statute would require, so I'd ask you to focus on those two issues at this point in time, and then I do want to mention that the vacation order does not mention all of the conditions that the M A P D had listed, which includes several factors, including, there was a list of seven conditions that talk about all the paperwork that needs to be submitted, to make sure that this vacation order is finalized appropriately, including having the legal descriptions attached and maps attached to the vacation order.
One quick follow-up, and then, I just need to make, the two conditions, I want to make sure the public and my brain is wrapped around this, we are vacationing county property, county land, are we going into anybody else's private land, this is just county land that we're, so the two conditions, is that correct, yes, this is just county property, the two conditions are, does it deter the enjoyment of the public's on this land, and does it infringe on property rights, can you...
Right, so the first condition would be, will the public suffer any loss or inconvenience by the vacation, so now it's public property, is vacating it and giving it back to the private landowners, going to cause a loss or inconvenience to the public, the second factor would talk about the private rights, has it been injured or endangered if we don't give the property back to the private owners?
And staff's recommendation is neither of those two conditions were met with this vacation, and the M A P C was ten-o with no protest, correct?
Correct.
All right, Commissioner Howell, go ahead.
And to clarify on that point, they did, you're telling me they did consider the first of those two points, that they believe that the public is not enduring a loss of enjoyment, which I think is the word you used?
I would tell you that at the subdivision committee meeting, to my recollection, no one came to the hearing, to, there was two members of the public that came and spoke at the subdivision meeting, and they essentially had questions about the process, not necessarily an objection to it, because they were wondering if they would have, no longer have access to that hiking trail, the open space in the middle, and to the pond, and so, once, once Daniel Schrant of Public Works had indicated what would happen and why this was going through was, was based on the fact that the road would cost a lot more if they had to meet county standards, then they understood that they would still be able to use the north portion to get around that middle space and still utilize that area, and then at M A P D, this matter was taken on consent because none of the commissioner, planning commissioners requested a hearing, and no members of the public appeared to request a hearing, so this was approved, hold on, let me double check on that second part, yeah, that's correct, at the M A P D, it was taken on consent and approved on consent.
And that was based on staff's recommendation, they thought it was non-controversial?
Yes.
And did the members of M A P C have a briefing on this to understand what this is all about, were they aware that there were people, even though they didn't appear, again, they appeared with the utility subcommittee, but when it came on consent from a M A P C, were the people that had objections to this, were they notified they could appear to M A P C, even though the item was on consent?
At the subdivision committee, they would have been told that then it's going to be set for the M A P C in the following week.
My question is, did the landowners on the north Edith Drive, did they know that this was going to come before M A P C on consent, and they still, they could still, if you will, appear before M A P C and speak to the issue, or were they notified of that?
I'm going to defer to the planning director?
Yes, sir, they were informed of the schedule, now, the way that the M A P C process works is that all items essentially are on the consent agenda, unless someone indicates a desire to hear an item, whether it's a member of the public or a member of the planning commission.
And were the members of the M A P C briefed on this to know the, whether they wanted to see this removed from the consent or not, were they aware of it?
We do not brief the planning commissioners, however, the seven members of the planning commission serve on the subdivision committee, and so those in attendance at that subdivision committee, were in attendance, would have been in attendance at the planning commission meeting, and would know the background behind this, and could have raised their hands or indicated that they wanted to somehow hear.
Were they aware of the concerns of the people to the north?
Yes, they were aware that there were concerns about access along Edith and access to the center, yes, sir.
Is it staff's opinion that the public has a good path to do what they want to do currently, even if this is entirely vacated as presented, is it staff's opinion that the public, anybody who lives to the north, really, the public at large, would have access to this entire body of water, to be able to walk entirely around it, is it your opinion they can get around this, no problem, I mean, again, you see how that, that blue line there is very close to the body of water, such that it's, it is described to me that you can't go down that thin piece of land there between the, what it shows, looks like a pond, and that blue line is literally just a couple of feet, and it gets so narrow there, they can't really stay off of private property and get around that entire, that entire space, that's, that was the concern that I, as I understand it, so, and again, it was staff, so is it staff's opinion that the public can get fully around this, this space as they do currently, if this is vacated, can the public get around that body of water, that entire space as they do today?
I would say, yes, it is a valid concern to be able to have that... I would say, yes, it is a valid concern to be able to have that access around that water body. Whether it rises to the prominence, though it causes an injury, I think is open for discussion. But yes, I think, I think lack of access around that water body could create an issue for people who use that center area for recreation.
So the statute that Samantha just read a minute ago, number one, being a taking of enjoyment of currently publicly accessible spaces, how do you resolve that, then?
I think the question is, does it, does it create one that rises to the point where it is an injury to the public access? If one person is deprived of the ability to walk it, is that, does that raise to that? Or if 50 people, at what point do you determine it tips the scale?
I don't think the law talks about the magnitude of damage. It just talks about public access. If it was one of people or a thousand people, it doesn't matter. I mean, my question is, how do you resolve that if there's a taking of public access to a property that's been enjoyed by the public? How do you resolve, number one, then?
And I think, sir, that, I think that's why it's presented to the county commission to make that determination about whether or not it is an injury to the public.
Let me ask you a question, then. Again, we're still in public comment, aren't we? I apologize. Let me stop for just a minute. I'll get back to you in a minute when we're off the public comment. Thank you.
Okay. Based on procedure, is there anybody else that would like? I think I already called to see if anybody else would like speaker to public comments. So I'm going to officially close public comment and move us forward and bring discussion back to the bench. Any questions or comments from the commission? Samantha, would you?
I have a couple of point of clarification. One, there was a question regarding what the township's position was. Lynn Packer of Public Works has indicated that he has had communication with the township and they are in favor of this vacation. Two, I would like to address Commissioners House's concern about the public and whether one individual would qualify as the public. I think if that was the analysis that says one person would make the public, all vacation requests would fail based on one single objection. So I would ask the board to consider that in light of the information. Another factor to consider is that this, since this vacation, the length of it is more than 500 feet, fire code requires that at minimum there be 30 feet for the driveway.
Okay. Thank you for that, Samantha. Okay. Any other questions or a motion that would like to be made? Commissioner Howell?
Sorry, you closed the public hearings. I have some other questions.
Okay. I did. Yeah, public hearing is closed.
All right, then I guess I'll continue. He closed the public hearings, here we go. So, so the answer to the question is 30 feet now. And I hate to say that, I don't want to have to circle back to everybody and ask the question again. It sounds like they're not willing to give up any. So let me ask staff a question. This is for Scott. When the proposal was made to vacate this property, was there any consideration for how much land it should be vacated to provide for the needs of the applicant versus just dedicating the entire roadway as currently plotted?
The request, so the request came in for the full right-of-way. So at that point, our procedure is to notify the advisory committee that we have with utilities. We notify other government entities. So the assumption is that if they've submitted for 50 feet, that they need the 50 feet unless we hear otherwise from other folks. So, and then what we do is we do the notification to the adjoining property owners and see if anyone objects in writing. And so, that's how we proceed through the process. So, no, we do not analyze the requests as it comes in and determine whether or not there should be a smaller portion unless we hear objections and concerns.
Okay. Let me ask another question. So there's a thin line between the verdicts of guilty and, let's see how I say it. Let me go back to, let me, more plain argument here. When you say if no one objects, so if they don't object, then you presume that that means they're okay with it or they're in favor of it? I mean, how do you?
Yes, sir.
So objection is the only other, so objection means you don't like it. But if you don't speak to the objection, then we just take that down as you're okay with it or that you're in favor of it?
Yes, sir. And part of that is because there is a state mandated shot clock on this in terms of timing. And we want to make sure that we consider these fully and take them through the process in a timely fashion.
Why has it taken eight months to get to this point? He testified it took him eight months to get to this point.
Oh, I'm not aware that, we have not had the application for eight months. I can tell you that. But we do rely on the applicant to make sure that they get us all of the information that's required as part of the conditions before we bring it forward to you. But I know that this was heard just within the last couple of months.
So once the county received the paperwork from the applicant or their agent, how long has it taken us to get to this point?
Gosh, you know, if I have a moment, I can look it up on my computer, but I can tell you.
Can you guess? I mean, what's the typical amount of time it took to get to this point?
Gosh, I'd say less than 60 days.
Okay. Okay. And then I guess another question I would have, again, the fact that we are aware of a concern about the lack of access around this, and they described this as a taking of their enjoyment of being able to access this space. The fact that they did not show up at the hearing and object formally and publicly, is this something we should or should not consider as a factor in this case, even though they didn't speak to it during the MAPC hearing or today, for that matter? Are we allowed to even consider that, that argument in light of the fact that they're not here to make the argument personally?
I would say that that's, it's been expressed. I know that they've talked with us. They've, it sounds like at some point, someone talked with you. Those are comments by constituents. Now, the state statute, when it comes to vacations, is very clear that if an adjoining property owner objects in writing, the vacation cannot proceed. Obviously, this does not meet that standard or rise to that level. But does it rise to the level where you should consider it? I think that's a judgment call, but they have taken the time to call and contact, but they have not taken the time to show up in person here today.
Curiously, the definition of adjacent, the fact that these two roads have the same name, separated by a drainage waterway, is it, is it any way, again, the properties don't touch? I see that. But since they're on the same, they have the same name of a road in front of them. In other words, if it's a mail delivery and you wanted the even numbers, you'd be on the north side or the numbers would be on the south side or whatever. But are they considered, are they considered on the same road? Is there any way that someone make an argument that they are in effect adjacent?
I would suggest not for this one, sir. And the reason why is because I think the state statutes are written with the intent to ensure that property owners who would utilize the right-of-way are not harmed and lose access to the roadway network, et cetera.
Well, let the record show that I have done my best today to find a balance. And I would argue that the one person that called me from the north side was, in fact, very rude. And I tried, I tried like crazy to find a way to resolve this in her mind to see if there's any way we could strike a balance. And I encouraged her to be neighborly and to find a way that meets the needs of both sides. And there was not any desire to do that. And I, I feel like, again, all the cards are in your hand. You're going to win this. I perceive you're going to win this today in your favor. I really wish there was something on paper that struck a balance that really met the need of both sides. Since we're in a formal, we're in a formal situation here where we're, you know, creating legal paperwork that defines the rights of both sides, rather than simply saying, it's my intent to let them access this. But honestly, you could change your mind the minute you walk out of here and do anything you want. You could put a fence up if you like. You could restrict access and you could call the sheriff and charge him with trespass. So there's nothing in paper that gives them a legal right to access this. Unless they can stand that basically six inches between the blue line and the body of water, they don't technically have a way to access fully around this. So I'm disappointed that, it seems to me that this process is broken a little bit today. But the fact that they're not here today, it is disappointing. And I would really encourage the two neighbors to find a way to do this that really is long-term. It's not just because you happen to live there today and you sell the property, the next owner is going to feel the same way that you feel. I mean, if this was done on paper, it defines rights for everybody forever. By doing it not on paper, it's just as simply because I want to be gracious today, but that could change at a moment. The rights are not really defined. And I feel like this is a taking of those properties. Nevertheless, they have not taken opportunity to appear here today or in front of MAPC. I think it's unfortunate. I'm doing my best to encourage, if you will, a reasonable balance. I will vote for whatever motion is made by my colleagues, but I'm not going to make a motion, but I'll support whatever motion that they make today. And I don't, I don't like, I don't like the way this was handled. I think there was a lot of opportunities for improvements. But I hope that the people on the north are hearing this today and I hope they know how hard I tried to find a balance. But there is, there is no way I can possibly do this in a way that really meets the needs of both the north and the south. So hopefully that they will get along in the future and this will not be a problem. Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Commissioner Meitzner.
Okay. Unless there's other comments, I want to make a motion that we adopt the findings of the MAPC commission and approve the vacation and sign the vacation order.
Okay. I'll second the motion.
Chairman.
Yeah, please.
And Commissioner Meitzner, I did have a slight suggestion. This is just piggybacking on something Samantha said earlier in this. And I defer to the will of the board, but this is just a suggestion on our part on that motion. Commissioner Meitzner, I think the suggestion would be if you'd be willing to consider adding in the conditions one through seven that are contained in pages 31 and 32 of the B O C C agenda materials. As those indicate, the conditions that I think would also be added to the vacation order as recommended by the planning commission. I'd be happy to stand for any questions on that.
Okay. I'll restate the motion to adopt the findings, the MAPC, including the amendments one through seven, and approve the vacation and sign the vacation order.
Okay. I'll second the motion. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to clarify, so with these conditions being added to this, do they have to go back and get more signatures? Is this going to add two weeks to the process?
No, Commissioner Howell, that's a good question. And just for the board's awareness, I realize this is being treated a lot like a zoning case, but it's just a simple majority requirement of three votes and does not require any additional processing to occur on the vacation application either. It's just simply the board's voted in terms of the text that will add into the order that ultimately reflects the vote of the board and gets recorded with the register of deeds. Thanks, Commissioner.
Okay. Very good. We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
All right. Okay. Ms. Keres, thank you. Appreciate you being here. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item H, Report of the Boards of Bits and Contracts, Regular Meeting on April 10, 2025.
Okay. I see Lee Barrier making her way down.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Lee Barrier, Purchasing Department, the regular meeting of the Boards of Bits and Contracts of April 10, 2025 resulted in one item which requires your approval. That item is technology solutions, products, and services for various departments. The recommendation is to utilize the inter-local purchasing systems contract number 220105 with Heartland Business Systems LLC. This contract is good through March 31, 2027, and we have one option to renew at the rates that are listed in the reference contract. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of this item.
Okay, Lee, thank you. One item on the bid board. Any questions or comments? Case seeing none, I'll move to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bidding Contracts on April 10, 2025.
A second.
Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Hey, Tom.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items I through R this morning.
Okay. Looking at consent agenda, Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you, Chairman. Could we pull item N just for clarification?
Yep, not a problem. Pulling item N for discussion. Commissioner, is any other questions on the remainder of the consent agenda? Case seeing none, I'll move to approve consent agenda items I through R with the exception of item N.
A second.
A motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, back to item N. Commissioner Bluebaugh, any specific questions? Or Tom, would you like to give a description?
Well, thank you. Just had a constituent reach out and asking the question, why are some people not paying their fair share? So I thought that we could just go through the history on this and clarify it.
Tom, the treasurer is here. I think she's ready to talk. And Justin Wagner can also comment on it.
Okay. And just to read for the public, item N on the consent agenda is a resolution authorizing 2017 personal property tax judgments to become dormant. So Brandy Bailey, our county treasurer is here. Brandy, welcome.
Good morning, Brandy Bailey, your county treasurer. So statute allows us to take any personal property that is seven years older and bring it to the commission and ask commissioners to write it off because we deem that it's dormant, uncollectible. Each year, we send out a tax bill to these individuals. We mark their motor vehicle, in the motor vehicle system. If you do not pay personal property tax, we can flag it so that way you cannot tag a vehicle unless you, until you pay that. And then we also send out sheriff warrants each year to... And so, these are seven years and older, or seven years old, because we do this each year. And these are the ones that we have no, we have not had these individuals come into the tag office to renew a vehicle. They haven't been found. We've gotten return mail for them. So we're assuming that they're either deceased or they've moved out of state. And so, that's what this list is. And this is a typical, the list right now is 1,400 line items. It's about, offhand, I can't remember the dollar amount now, but this is pretty typical, the dollar amount and the amount of that we write off each year.
Okay. And I assume that there's a carrying cost each year, just leaving it on the books.
And it's just to help us clean up our books and keep the tax rolls current and cleaned up and...
And probably, at the seven-year point, is it really cost prohibitive as what you're getting or have we ever tried after the seven years?
We don't try, we don't try after the seven years.
But I assume in the three to five year, it gets pretty slow.
Right. So if we look at what we have as delinquent personal property today, we're at approximately 5,000. So after seven years, we're at 1,400. So we do still collect it. And we try each year to collect it. And like I said, we, any record where these individuals' names are on the record, we note it. So that way, if they do come in or we make contact with them, we do try to collect that.
Okay. Thank you. And for clarity, this is personal property.
Correct.
And this is trailers, ATVs. This isn't, these aren't homes, correct?
Correct. This is not real estate. This is strictly personal property. Yes, your trailers and ATVs.
And the sheriff is issuing a warrant, so there's a lien on this individual as well. So this is not just saying you didn't pay. Sorry, this is, there are ramifications.
Yes, that is correct. And then, actually, a couple of years ago, we did reach out to the state of Kansas to look at sending it to their division where they can take that money if you have a refund. And it was just, that wasn't even cost prohibitive, that they would essentially take most of what we would be collecting. So we just...
Understood. Okay.
So we've looked into other options as far as ways to try to collect this, but...
Okay, Brandy, thanks for coming and updating. That's important. I appreciate the clarity. Any other questions on item N? Case seeing none, I'll move to approve consent agenda item N.
Second.
A motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
We don't have many new grant pieces of information to share, which is great. We do continue to work on the risk assessment, so we will have some more reactive, or I'm sorry, more proactive work to do that we will bring to you for presentation. But what I wanted to let you know about today is a webinar that the U.S. Treasury hosted yesterday related to ARPA. So we had our $100.2 million that was fully allocated and expended in 2024. However, we still have quarterly reports that are necessary. One of the things that we learned yesterday is that there was an unintentional cancellation of a contract for the Treasury that is responsible for the technical component of our reporting, and that contract was actually canceled but then reinstated at a lower rate. And so they have told us that if we run into any technical issues when we are posting our reports, it could take significant time for that to be corrected, but we are still expected to do timely reports. So I just want to make you aware because there is some risk in that, even though we have our reports and we're done as far as spending. If we're not able to file that in a timely fashion because we have some kind of technical glitch, that could become a reporting issue. They were talking about compliance and strict compliance on that reporting yesterday despite the technical issues. So I just want to make sure you're aware. We don't anticipate any issues, but it's hard to know.
Lindsay, for the public's awareness, this is the second week we've talked about this. Could you just, again, maybe very briefly lay out what we're doing and why we're doing this section on the agenda every single county commission meeting and what the county response is so far?
Absolutely. So we have a group that is made up of basically the county manager's leadership team and the budget team, everyone involved in the grants compliance office, and then any department that receives any federal funding that convenes every Friday morning at 9:00 a.m. to talk about any information related to potential federal grant cancellations, early cancellations, terminations, anything that's being made aware that's going away. And we started this pretty quickly because we were made aware that, I think the first week of April, that as of March 24, two of our grants terminated with no notice. We actually had some positions in those positions, and we weren't allowed to draw down any funds for those positions after that 3/24 date, even though we didn't know that the funding went away. And so that group meets to talk about those things and make recommendations either for alternative sources of funding or, as you all have approved now, to basically communicate about what those grants are that have been terminated. And what we are doing is, as a standard practice, is if it's not in com care, that grant ends, and we continue the operations for 60 days with a very intentional messaging process to the community members who are being affected by that grant termination, also to those staff to give them some time to hopefully find other positions. And then at the conclusion of two months, if there are positions, those positions are eliminated with a reduction in force package that provides an additional two pay periods or four weeks worth of pay and eight works worth of the county's portion of benefits to help them ease into that transition. We also are working to stand up a community resource page. If you recall what we had during COVID, trying to connect people to workforce resources or social services, we're standing that up as well. And that's kind of the reactive side. On the proactive side, we do have a list of every federal grant that we receive, and our grants compliance office is going to work in conjunction with all of the departments to identify based on everything we've heard so far what the risk assessment level is, if it's high, medium, or low. If it's a high risk, we're going to start communicating with you sooner so that we can make some plans and provisions and trying to get ahead of that, especially with community resources. So hopefully that answers your question.
It does, very wise. I don't anticipate that you know this answer off the top of your head, so maybe you can email the commission. About how many dollars do we receive in federal grants at this point in time?
10 to 12 million annually.
You did know, impressive.
That's, that's, that's the standard. We have received more than that, obviously with CARES, ARPA, and some other COVID funding the last several years, but the standard is 10 to 12 million.
10 to 12 million of this funding, operational grants, service grants, things of that sort.
Yes.
Okay. And do we consider 10 to 12 million dollars? Is it, is the bulk of that money at high risk right now, do you believe?
I would not maybe, yes, actually recognizing that 8 million of that is in the Health Department and what we've heard at a federal level, yes, I would say it's significantly at risk.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. I want to thank the staff, your team, Tom, Lindsay, for being proactive the best we can and getting out in front of this and let our staff know the 3,000 employees Sedgwick County Government, particularly in com care, health department, aging, some of these that are more dramatically impacted, that we have a plan and we're working through this and we're trying to communicate the best that we can. But we understand the needs and understand, and we're sensitive to these needs, so thank you. Last question, when is that community resource page, when do we anticipate that being online?
I don't know that we've had that conversation yet.
Okay, but it's coming.
That we will work on it earnestly.
Very good.
Yes, we have a template because we had it during COVID, so I don't anticipate it being.
Okay, very good. Just let us know when that's available.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on federal grants? Very appreciative that this is a part of our weekly meeting, so. Okay. Great. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Okay, do we have any committee reports we'd like to share to the public? Commissioner Wise?
Yes, if I may, I would love to report on the Sedgwick County Zoo. As many of you know, we had another baby this week. So we've now delivered or had a safe delivery of another African elephant calf at Sedgwick County Zoo. Kaijani was born on April 14, just four days after Beaumont on April 10. So we have two baby elephants that are still being kept alone for now with moms as they get to know each other and I think adapt. The moms are still a little skittish and not willing to let me go see them last night when I was there. So we're anxiously waiting until they're ready to be out in the zoo yard. We're also waiting for the other two calves that are due. I believe one is mid-May through June, and then my understanding is the second one's closer to August, September, but I can confirm that. The Sedgwick County is committed to the elephant barn with approval of the grant application to the U.S. Department of the Interior and financial commitment of 2.5 million that was approved in November 2024. So Sedgwick County Zoo is a huge asset to our community, a huge economic driver, key